Mayor Conley Bowles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner?
Here.
Alderman John Bug?
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gregg?
Here.
Alder Woman Kathy Hope?
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst?
Here.
Item three is approval of minutes at the previous meetings, the first one being under item A, the regular session on January 13th, 2011. You have those in your notebooks that I've had opportunity to look at those. Do you have a motion to approve or did you want to notice any corrections that needed to be made or additions?
I'll make a motion, Mr. President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All votes in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Item B, the minutes for the special power meeting, January 18th, 2011. Do we have a motion to approve for any corrections or additions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All votes in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. The next item will be declarations and recognitions. We have a couple of certificates here. Would you like to present? The certificate is awarded to the Newport Police Department in recognition of accident three in 2018. Maurice, who would? The accident three, we have a further warning. Everybody, y'all, I appreciate you and me. The next one is awarded to the Newport Parks and Recreation in recognition of the fifth consecutive year, accident three in 2018.
Mayor and Council, in your notebook, you have the Newport Fire Department report, Parks and Recreation Safety Report, Street Department, Police Department, three detective reports, planning and coach department, Cock County Partnership, and the animal shelter. And also the financial board is in the back. Do have a couple of additional announcements to make. The animal shelter has changed their hours somewhat. Instead of closing at five o'clock in the evening, they're going to start closing at four o'clock until spring and summer gets here. And also, I'd like to announce and at the same time congratulate her at the same time. Ms. Jane Reagan recently was awarded a certification for the Certified Municipal Finance Officers Program. And this was an esteemed honor, and it was the first class ever. And she was awarded her certificate on the floor of the Capitol in Nashville. So we're very proud of Jane for this great accomplishment. And we're going to host a small reception this Thursday at two o'clock, just to let her know how proud we are of her. And the last item to mention, and again, this is very preliminary, but the downtown signalization program is back under consideration by T-Dog officials in Nashville. They have sent information to the Knoxville Regional Office and have requested that all comments be backed by February 28th. So we hope that this project will move forward because I know several of you here on the boards been working very hard on it. And it's looking favorable at this time. Mayor, that's all I have right now.
I'm just going to add. I talked to T-Dog today. They called me back when we were in Nashville about the payment of 321. I asked a specific question, whether we're still on schedule for North Street to be paid essentially. They called today and said it was definitely on schedule. And I didn't get the chance to come back. They just had to postpone us. So it is on schedule to be paid at all of North Street, Highway 321, what they said. That's from Steve Borde.
The next item is under appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Item A is the municipal court judge physician has come open to use the retirement of Bill Myers. What's the council, any comments to council concerning that appointment?
I do, Connie. I had a long call today that people would like the same opportunity that we give the school board and the Newport utilities to run it in the paper and ask for the application or the resumes sent to the City Hall. And I'll make a motion that we table this till March and give everybody the opportunity to put in a resume. I left us one question. Do we, that's true, do we have to have a judge until then?
We've been discussing that prior to the meeting, whether it would be, whether we'd need one or not. And it's my opinion, we could get by without one. And I've discussed that with the clerk of the court, who indicated that our cases sit this month, but those could be continued till March. So from a logistics standpoint, we could wait.
Yes, sir.
We have, I guess, three options. We could appoint somebody tonight. We can appoint somebody tonight on a temporary basis. The ordinance gives us that option. Or we can not appoint anybody and do what the motion stated. We could take resumes and come back and appoint somebody. The ordinance provides for a two-year term. It's my understanding, Judge Myers' term expired during the month of February. So I guess the end of February there. So. Sir, do you know if he would be willing to stay on until we fill the position? I sure haven't talked to him. I don't have no idea about that. I know Bill has tried to retire from everything. So I just don't know about that.
Just what brought this on is the last meeting we had, I thought Bill was, he showed that he wanted to come back. He wanted to be reappointed. And then Monday, he resigned. So I don't think we can give these other people the opportunity to put in a resume like we do for all the other boards. And that's where I'm basing this on.
And we've got a motion to table it. I'll second the motion. Do we have any other discussion?
The only thing I would say, Mayor, is if there are people here to speak tonight, then let them speak. Because they've come down here to, they're prepared to, I guess, say that they're here to show their interest. So I wouldn't want to not let them speak if that's what they want to do.
Are we not? No, we also, of course, this is similar to what we're doing with the school board. That's kind of going to, we're going to turn in resumes. And then, do we have a date? Did we not set a date that we're going to hear from each of those to speak?
Twenty-fifth is the last day for a resume from the school board. And then the workshop, March first.
Is it March first?
It's first, the workshop we've got coming up, we're supposed, all of them come to hear from each one of them.
Okay. March first.
Right.
Did you make that motion to let them speak?
I'll add that in my motion.
Because there's people who have already submitted a letter, is all I'm saying.
Right. If they're willing, want to speak tonight, I'll add that in my motion. If they want to wait till next month with the rest of them, then that's fine, too.
So what you're saying is, March the first is one more hearing people for the school board.
And we'll also do the municipal judge at that same time.
Right. Okay, that's, is that clear with you, Johnny? You second the motion?
Yes.
And, okay. Roll call, vote for you.
Alderman John Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Bill, Vice Mayor Bill Costner?
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Gregg?
Yes.
Alder Woman Kathy Hope?
Yes.
Alderman Kenny Morgan?
Yes.
Okay. Now, with that being asked, is there anyone here that doesn't want to speak tonight concerning that position?
Mayor, if you would like to hear from me this afternoon, as far as position I've placed, Joanne Sheldon, I've placed my name and my resume in there. If you would like to hear briefly from me, and then obviously, I'd like the opportunity to speak to you at a workshop level. So if there are any individual questions and anything more in depth, I'd be more than happy to speak to you.
Okay, that'd be fine.
As I said, my name is Joanne Sheldon. I've been in private practice here for quite some time. I started out in Cock County as a prosecutor. So I have a very diverse background. I've also, I've been in private practice, and not just state level, but the federal level, on the CJA panel of the federal court, which you have to go through a very rigorous standard to be appointed in federal cases. In addition, I've argued in front of the Sixth Court of Appeal, Circuit Court of Appeals. And I was also swearing personally before the US Supreme Court a year ago, this past December. When I was in private practice in Sevier County, I also sat as city judge for Gatlinburg, and by setting as city judge in Gatlinburg for the Arnold McCarty, when he was very ill. One thing I learned was how they generated revenues for the city there, and how they use their ordinances to generate the equivalent of certain C-Missimayers to use those tickets to bring more revenue and earmark them in for the city monies, as opposed to taking the monies that went through the Sessions Court. One of the things I encountered as being a prosecutor was that a lot of the officers were taking cases to the Sessions Court that maybe they could have taken to the city that would have generated more revenues and monies that could have stayed here in the cities. So my position is, is that the city judge needs to work very closely with law enforcement and with chief and speak and talk to the officers about maybe taking different steps, taking certain citations, and following the ordinances more closely to bring those cases here to this court. When I say the city judge in Gatlinburg, they have prosecutors. So you're having to weigh the evidence in a true argumentative fashion, just like you would in a circuit or Sessions Court. Here, we don't have that. So the judge is having to sit in a position of almost being somewhat of a prosecutor, but also having to keep a neutral and detached view because you are presenting proof on these cases. And if they decide to proceed with an appeal, they can do just that and take it to Circuit Court. So you have to be very mindful of how you are handling these cases. My background is in, I have an accounting degree, very mindful, not the county specifically, on how this works. As I said, I have a private practice. I'm very involved. I have four sm- I have four kids. So children are very important. And one of the things is what's going on that goes through here, there are ways to ensure the safety and how it should be monitored and keep it here. Now, another mechanism is through the city of Gatlinburg. They have a deferral program. We don't have that. It's either you're pleading guilty or you have a trial. There are certain things that can be mirrored and tailored for this court to help get more tickets, but also have it so you don't have this red lock. When you set for the city, when I set for the city of Gatlinburg, the court would be packed with people who are coming before the city as opposed to going to Sessions Court. So there are ways that this position can be utilized. I have the background, which will enable me to do that, but also sitting in the unique posture of there not being a prosecutor and looking at the equity of the situation and what's fundamentally just, weighing both sides. And that, I believe, would be very beneficial to this, to the county, or to the city. And also, another thing, we don't have, and I have the ability, if there's something, someone comes through here on certain issues, obviously, it needs to go to county. Someone's going excessively, and there's lots of data, that's a reference and data, right? It's going to go through the county. But there are specific cases that need to be brought for the city, and it's just not being done. And I think by working very closely with law enforcement and with the city attorney, and trying to coordinate everything, and they come to workshop with them to make sure this is taken care of, so that this is just not a position where there's very few people before the court. So given the opportunity, I can implement, and I know how to administrate, and make sure this is taken care of, and just across the board. So I appreciate all of your time very much, and I'll look forward to the workshop if there are any additional questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any other? You're saying, is it?
Our board has a workshop and a board meeting, a lot fun, when you're going to have yours. And we have other people on that board that rely to see their meeting.
What time's your board meeting?
Our board meeting is about Thursday.
Is it five thirty?
I don't know if they can put it off or not. You might talk to the chairman about that.
Okay.
She might be able to tell you, or reschedule that, because there are people on that board that rely on you.
Okay. I'll work on that. You said that's at five thirty as well?
Yeah.
Thank you. The next item B is appointments to the beer board, Reed Vassar. If that is the one that's up for reappointment or consideration, if y'all have other nominees or whatever the council lacks today. So the floor is open for your decision on the beer board.
I think that's his nomination anyway.
The mayor's nomination, he can.
He's currently the servant.
Can he nominate?
Yes.
Motion, Mr. President?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All votes in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. There's nothing under item seven, nothing under full business. Item nine, new business. First item A is a second reading of ordinance 2011-01, the personnel policy.
Mayor, I'll read the caption. That ordinance is into the record. It's ordinance 2011-01, City of Newport, Tennessee, as ordinance to establish personnel rules and regulations for employees of the City of Newport, Tennessee. These rules and regulations shall serve as a primary source document of personnel policies.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this on the second reading?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All votes in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Item B is Resolution 2011-04, the NUC area water system improvements.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All votes in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Item C is the Newport Police Department grant from T-Dog.
Mayor, by this, that grant is actually from the Governor's Highway Safety Office, just for clerical purposes. It would be GHSO, or Governor's Highway Safety Office. I just want to read that into the record so that we would show that that grant is a Highway Safety Office grant.
Y'all have any questions, or do we have a motion to?
This is the one you've already got?
It's a $5,000 grant that we've been awarded. But we, what we need is the authority to spend the $5,000 and send the receipt to State of Tennessee, so they'll send us the $5,000 back.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All votes in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Thank you. You're welcome. Item D, roadblock, Cock County Shrine Club. Get that information in your notebook. That's, I think that's one we've discussed before. That is, it's an every-year thing with that organization. And I don't think the six-month rule even comes into effect for that one, because it's like grandpa being with the cancer and the rescue squad and so forth. So do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. All votes in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no?
Yes.
I hear none. Item E is roadblock, Newport Farmers Market.
I just, I don't have anything against this, Connie, but I think this is awful quick. I mean, it's turned in now for a roadblock this weekend. I mean, we get it on the 25th, and they want a roadblock on February 12th.
Is that one of, I know we did a lot. Is that one of the rates that's only available? Or is this?
Oh, I don't know.
Mayor, are you here?
Yes, sir. My understanding is that there weren't any, you can say nothing, which I did for both the Newport Farmers Market and Clean Water Initiative in Tennessee. It is an issue, and it's a difficult process, but I just thought it was not, it was not a real issue, it's like, lying to the states.
Were you aware that there's a six-month waiting period?
Yes, sir, I was. And again, my understanding is that, but if you don't want to do it, Nicole, but if it is, we can do that.
You have, what's your pleasure?
Who's the government? I know the people, what do you say? The legislature made it a sign?
That I'm about to say, you know, most of them are good, good for the community, especially when we're trying to clean up the fidget river and the work that they do.
What is the roadblock money used for on that farmer's market, farmers?
For which organization, the Newport Farmers?
The Farmers Market.
Well, it's going to be for Community House Cooperative, which is a nonprofit that runs Farmers Market. We serve different classes of the community. We have a computer lab that serves over 100 people a week. We, Farmers Market, carry that out, provides space and resources to furnish the solar grid and produce. And our organization also does supervised vacations that are for order. So CHC serves all of those needs in the community, and the Farmers Market, I apply specifically for that, but Community House Cooperative is the nonprofit that would be receiving that money.
Do we charge the farmers to sit up there to actually?
We charged them $5 last year. We're actually discussing whether we're going to get them or not this year, whether we charge them here or not.
Specifically, maybe for advertising.
How are we charging?
I mean, here's my thinking. I mean, it's obviously for good cause either way, and they're a nonprofit. I don't know.
If they're doing a roadblock, why do we charge the farmers?
I think this is the first one.
In the past, we've charged the farmers because it gives them some input, they're participating in the process. And we use the money to buy things that we need from market, trash bags, supplies, signs. Farmers Market's definitely not an effort that does not cost money.
Didn't we apply for a grant to take care of all that?
Yes, sir, we applied for a grant, but it isn't meeting all of our needs, unfortunately. And Community House Cooperative, again, is an organization that would be receiving funds, not the Farmers Market per se. Community House Cooperative is over the Farmers Market. It's a nonprofit organization. So, I mean, that's just basically, except paying our electricity, internet, keep the market in operation.
Where's your office located at?
The Tanner Building.
In your panel electricity?
Yes, sir.
Who do you pay?
Newport Utilities, I believe. I don't pay the bill, but I think that's.
I don't think anybody up there pays any electricity, but see, if Newport, am I wrong?
I think it's great. We pay quite a bit in utilities for the entire building.
What you say, member?
In our panel, Bill.
They do?
In the Port Utilities.
Here's, here's what I, I have to say, if, I mean, there's nothing wrong with this. This is good, but what happens if we say, you know, go ahead and do it. And next week or next month, somebody come in and say, well, I want to have one, too. We've got a six-month waiting period. No, we don't. No, we don't. Newport Farmer's Market, you got theirs in two weeks. You either, you either go by the rules or regulations, or you don't go by the rules and regulations. I say you wait six months, if that's what it says, that's what you got to do. You making that as a motion done? Yes, sir.
I want a second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All votes in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Johnny, was your motion for both roadblocks? I mean, per se, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Do we need to do a separate one on each one, or?
Six roadblocks, I think.
You said a roadblock?
Yeah, all roadblocks, I assume.
Yeah.
Well, then I have a different discussion on them. The second one, we waived it all the time, and we clearly know what they do. This is the part that cleans up the streets of America. And I know they have a lot of experiences in, I think we need to consider this one by itself.
My motion stands.
My motion stands. I think if we got rules and regulations, we got to go by.
We never follow it. We've approved every one that we get. It's almost updated. Every time it's not within six months, we figured all of that was a discussion.
Maybe we need to look at them. I mean, if that's what it says, that's what it says. I mean, I'm not against anybody, but.
I brought it up to wait, to do a waiver, the waiver, about six months ago, and voted down for that. But, you know, I'm like Johnny, if we've got a six-month waiting period, then we ought to wait for six months instead of coming here every week and waive it. But I see pretty y'all want to.
Same as I have, and waive them every time. If we don't start that, we don't tell them when they're in here asking for one that we've been to.
If you remember correctly, after I brought that up, I believe I made the motion to waive every one of them after that.
I know. That's what I'm saying. If we're going to do it, then.
But I don't like it.
Well, I think right now, right now, I think we should stick with our guns until we change it. If we, I mean, if we decide to change it, right now, we're at six months. That's just all that. I don't know if it was, which council it was. It may have been the last one. But we have indicated, and of course, the newness of our office staff, now may not know this, but at one time, we said if it doesn't meet the requirements and what it says the six months, don't put it in the agenda. That's what it's really supposed to be. If it comes to this, the City Hall, and it's not the six months requirements, which is what those what the rule says, then it's not to even go on the agenda.
And save a whole lot.
That's what was, that's the way it is supposed to be. But now, that may have been two or three, so years ago, but that's because this kept coming up.
It's been a while, Connie.
It's been a while, but that's what we said, if it's not.
I have no problem if we're going to stick to that. Due to the fact that this is a new council, and if we're going to do it, then this means a new year, then we need to start now and do it from now on, and don't waive it when somebody from this prepared it.
This is going to be my request to council right now.
Exactly, what happens in the...
I would like somebody on this council to retract the six months. I can't make the motion, but I think that's what we need to do, and that'll clear it all up, then we can decide each time if we want to pass it or not.
Just so we retract that motion in six months.
I can't make the motion, but if somebody here can make it, would that be my recommendation to end the problem with the roadblocks?
Would that be some exceptions of the ones that's grandfathered in? I mean, you might. We've only got two, I believe, that are grandfathered.
I'm just, you saw it. I think so, too. But I mean, if we take away the six-month waiver, you know, but those days, those two days are still remaining effective. They're locked in, that wouldn't change that, and that will take care of the discussion every council needed to wait. That's just my request to council.
Mayor, I think there's one more, I think. March or March, or somebody else out there.
There's four. Well, this doesn't have anything to do with those dates, that's permanent. What I'm saying is, I'd like the council to retract the six-month thing. And there.
I brought that up once before, if we want to do it, we just need to get rid of the rules.
I believe you're going to go tonight, make your motion.
I'll make it a motion. That we throw the ban six months, and we take them on an individual basis when they come into the front office, and we go from there.
But they're all presented to council.
All presented to council.
Did you second that, Johnny?
Uh, yeah. Kathy did.
Kathy did, but I... Okay, whoever. Let's go ahead and do a roadblock, a roadcall, just in case.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner?
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Gregg?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kathy Ho?
Yes.
Alderman Kenny Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman John Buck?
Yes.
Now, it's going to be my request that we go back and relook at these two.
Okay.
Okay. So, somebody needs to make a motion that we go back and relook at what we...
I'll make the motion, we'll go back and look at these, and I'll make a motion to pass both of them.
Okay. Second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate the same yes?
Yes.
Oppose is no? Thank you.
You got your roadblocks, I hear.
Okay, there's no, there's no being shot. Okay, the floor is open for comments from citizens. Anyone want to make any comments?
We do know what we're doing.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Everybody, folks, thank you.